Now be recorded.
Here we go, seven o'clock, we're gonna kick it off. So thank you all, welcome to the 12 July 2022 meeting of the King George County Planning Commission. For the record, we do have a quorum, albeit barely, but we do have a quorum. So at this point, if you are able to, I ask you, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, to the Republic of America, which is standing on the ground, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, if we could just please observe a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. All right, so the next order of business tonight on the agenda is the public comment period. So at this point, if anybody has any public comments that they would wish to make, please approach the podium and if you would state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. And at this point, we will open the public comment period. And doesn't look like we've got anybody here. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone out in the ether that would like to speak tonight? All right. All right, next order of business is approval of minutes. And we're first gonna go through the 31 May 2022 working session meeting minutes. So if anybody has any comments on that, as we normally do, just please state what that is and what page it might be on, and we will address that accordingly. No. Did you dial into that? And I'm gonna jump in here if I can. Ms. Fish, on the bottom of page nine, the second to last bullet, there's a paragraph Chairman Parker stated, I remember when we were going through the comp plan a couple of years ago. And I was, on the sentence that starts, "In the event there should be a new project that comes onto the base," I would like for that next part to say, "We do not want them to say, 'Well, we cannot accept this work.'" So it doesn't sound like I'm speaking for the base. It's the only comment that I had. Anybody else have any comments?
One quick thing on the May 31 minutes, page 25 at the top, "Shooting range indoor." The text discusses outdoor. Shooting range indoor, figure 32.
I can't recall what that was referencing at the time was...
We'll check on it.
Okay.
Right, it should either be shooting range indoor, outdoor, we discussed outdoor, and I recall the discussion saying it was an undesirable use. God know what we did with indoor.
We'll check into it, thank you.
All right. Mr. Colwell, do you have any comments on the 31 May meeting minutes? Okay. All right, if there's no additional comments, we will ask for a motion to approve. Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded, all in favor.
Mr. De Vries abstains.
Okay, abstentions to De Vries and Mr. Myers. All right. With that said, we will go on to the review and approval of the meeting minutes of the 14 June 2022 meeting. And again, if you have any comments, please let us know what page they are on, and we will address those accordingly.
Page four. Page four, one, two, three bullets down, states Vice Chairman De Vries, I should just say, Mr. De Vries.
You got promoted. Reinstated. All right. There any additional comments, questions, concerns? If not, we will again ask for a motion of approval.
Moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Abstentions, two abstent, one abstention, Mr. Myers. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Sport Facility, South Potomac. Mr. Hastings, the floor is yours. How are you tonight, sir? Good.
No updates tonight.
Okay, thank you for being with us. All right. Next on our agenda is the plan review, which we do not have any this evening. And that brings us to our public hearing this evening, which is the capital improvements program for FY 22 and 23 through FY 26 to 27. And at this point, we will open, I'm sorry, Ms. Hall.
I'm tagging in.
I'm sorry.
Just a reminder that you are ranking these from urgent, necessary, needed, but not required, desirable, and future consideration. This is your public hearing tonight. So you will hear from each of the department heads, starting with Mr. Chris Miller.
Excellent. Evening, Mr. Miller.
How are you, Mr. Chairman?
Good, how are you, sir?
Members of the Planning Commission, we have a little presentation here, and of course, you have all the department heads that, and constitutional officers that will have a CIP project. So we will go through this little presentation, and then we'll turn it over to the individuals for some of their project descriptions and to answer any questions. All right, so Chris, I always sit up there and I always think... Which one? Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna give you the fiscal year 23 budget highlights to give you an overview of the capital improvement process, but also some of our operating budget scenarios for the coming, for this current fiscal year. So we had an 11% increase in the total operating budget for FY 23 over FY 22. The total operating budget that was just approved almost a little bit less than two weeks ago was $108,357,939. County is continuing to grow, obviously, and you all would be the first line of that with a lot of the review that you do and property reassessment and the vehicle valuation increases, which I know is kind of a hot topic right now with people. But I can tell you this, the Board of Supervisors debated this and discussed it at length and felt that they came up with rates that were giving the residents as much of a break, given the reassessment, while at the same time trying to be fiscally responsible with some of the needs that the county continues to have. And you will see that, I guess, when we do our presentation on the capital projects. But operating, the schools' operating budget has increased by 12.2%. We certainly have Dr. Boyd here, who is the interim superintendent and can certainly answer any questions that you might have about that part of the budget. I have Ms. Hahn here, who can answer any questions that you might have about the the non-schools portion of the operating budget. But I know we're here to talk about capital projects. One of the big drivers for us in the operating size, on the non, the non-school portion of the operating side, was the regional jail that we participate in, which is based in Stafford. And Sheriff Giles is actually the chairman of the jail board. And we have obviously a participation in that, and it's broken up as a pro-rata basis. The alternative, of course, if we didn't participate in this, would be, we would have to have a jail of our own. And I don't know that the sheriff wants to just necessarily get into that business because it's not a fun business to be in. So we're very fortunate to be in this regional alliance with several of the other counties. But it was a increase to their budget from an operating and a capital side, and that meant that our portion of it went up. We had debt service increase by just a little over, under 3%, 2.7%. Our operating budget includes $6 million for CIP. This includes debt funding to complete the courthouse and two large CIP projects, which we'll talk about here tonight. The courthouse, let me just give you an overview of where we are on that. The courthouse project, as you recall, in the fall of 2020, the Board of Supervisors issued a bond for approximately $20 million. COVID obviously happened, changed up a lot of things. We are now looking at having to get an additional $12 million to cover essentially the cost escalation that has happened in that amount of time. And if anybody involved in the building trades knows that, you know, pricing is really an inexact science right now. Things that we could get guarantees for 90 days several years ago, we're getting less than 30-day guarantees on pricing. And so we're trying to do what is known as a construction manager at risk project for the courthouse. And a construction manager at risk is essentially the general contractor essentially guarantees the prices for all of their subs. And basically, you're not necessarily awarding based on lowest bid. What can happen when you do it based on lowest bid, a lot of times is when you have price overruns or change orders and things like that, you end up having lots and lots of change orders. This way, we lock in a guaranteed maximum price, and that's where we are right now. The board hopefully is going to approve a contract with a company by the name of Branch Builds. They built the the new middle school here in King George. They're also building the high school in West Moreland County as well. And I think they may be finished with that. But the hope is we get that on a, it's probably gonna be a special meeting on the 26th. That project will take probably until Easter time, April, March of 2024. And the backlog of getting materials, the backlog of scheduling out things, has really impacted that project a little bit. But the board felt the obvious need to commit, continue to commit to getting that courthouse completed. And so that's where we are, that's where we stand right now. We also received 2.6 million in ARPA funds that can be used. As you recall, last year we had the same amount. So in total, the county has received over a two-year period, $5.2 million in the American Recovery and Recovery Plan funding, which is very helpful. It allows you to rank and prioritize additional projects that then the Board of Supervisors can fund using these ARP funds. So let's talk about some of the projects from last year's 21 and 22. And certainly, there's department heads, and as I said, the constitutional officers are here to address any of these in a more in-depth fashion. But you recall that you all approved and/or ranked a number of these projects, the tennis courts reconstruction. We attempted to use a cooperative purchasing procurement, and that did not work. And so we are now doing bids open last week. We're working through those bids. We understand that there's an overrun on those costs as well. Essentially, you know, I think you're gonna find that everything that we talk about is going to have some kind of an overrun. The asphalt parking that is the Rivercomb Building Parking Lot, set to start, we were gonna start last Friday, but because of the rain that was projected, we moved it off a week, and so it starts at the end of this week. We had to go to the board for another, was it 77,000, wasn't it? Almost $80,000 additionally. Now, you can imagine with the price of fuel that anything related to asphalt is gonna obviously have a pretty good size overrun. Park safety upgrades, the Sealston Fence and the Barnesfield Bleacher Project is complete. Parks and Rec to meet with prospective contractors at the end of July for the Barnesfield Fence. School bus replacement order has been placed for five replacement buses in December 21. And again, I think Dr. Boyd can certainly update you on where we stand on some of that. The KGES and the SES Security Cameras Project was complete June of this year. And the high school door access is ordered in June of 22. The security cameras at the high school also ordered in June of 22. Ralph Bunch replacement of the roof, grant funded, the contract is in place. As you recall, the county received $500,000 to replace the roof. And we do have, we do have a project in there about the maintenance building's roof. And so that is, that was not able to be included in this first round. But we, you know, this project is ongoing. There's a committee in place now, as you may have heard, for Ralph Bunch, about kind of really getting going on, on looking for donors, looking for other funding sources. And so we'll have a lot to talk about that here in a little bit. Network management system's complete for FY 21 and 22, and Mr. Dines can certainly update you on that if you have a question. Computer replacements, same as, same as the other one. The virtual information security offer, office cybersecurity is complete for FY 21, 22. Just had a tabletop exercise, so Chris can tell you all about those things. Replacement of the county financial system, that was a big project, and it is a big project. The, we've got the contract for a project manager, which will handle the process, that is in the, that is in the works right now, and that is being coordinated by Ms. Hahn and Finance Department. Roll-off truck was purchased, was completed in January of 22. The roll-off containers for Sealston Convenience Center, those purchases were completed in March of 22. Countywide radio system, we are obviously working with Motorola, which is our source. And Sheriff Giles is here to update you on that project. It is moving forward, and that is one of the projects that I spoke about, that we included funding to, for a bond issue that would, that would fund that project, as well as another CIP project associated with the Fire Department. So there were three major capital projects that we put in the operating budget for the, for the Board of Supervisors. And it was that one, the radio system, the gap funding for the courthouse, and then the fire station in Dahlgren. Ambulance replacement program, the contract is in, in the process. Fire and rescue facilities, the land purchase, and I'll, you know, again, I will defer to Chief Moody, he can tell you more about that. But that is on, on a fast track, I guess, if I will, is it on a fast track, chief? He's working at every way he can, but we are definitely gonna have a new fire station in Dahlgren within the next couple of years. And I know that is something of an accomplishment, because I believe Fire Chief Moody has been working on this for a long time. So we're very, very pleased. Replacement of Engine 3, that's currently being built. And that kind of wraps up the the projects. Just, oh, you got more for me, Donna? Oh, okay. So the first tranche of slides was what you all recommended and, and, you know, gave a priority to. These are additional ones that the Board of Supervisors came up with and added to the previous years, to last year's capital projects. Construction of a shelter at Sedell Brooks Park, that is underway. Mr. Clark can certainly update you on that. The lighting for Sealston Sports Complex, Barnesfield Park, and the King George Middle School Baseball Softball, we are preparing specifications for the bid documents. So that is something that we are working on. Security lock upgrades for county facilities, that is one of these ones where we were looking if we could do, you know, the cooperative purchasing, or, you know, or some way off of the state deal, and we, we got that solidified. And so that is in the works. Mr. Muncy is handling that and can certainly tell you about that. Countywide IT equipment, the purchases were, were complete. County Fueling Depot, that is one that the Board of Supervisors added, and that will be at Company 1 on Route 3 here. And I think, I believe that Chief Moody had talked about the importance of having, you know, a reserve fuel system, because right now, our folks, we go to sheets, just like anybody else. And we're competing with citizens to get, to fuel up. And when there's a crisis, it obviously kind of puts an impingement on us. So one of the things that we wanted to do was have that backup so that we could, you know, have a guaranteed source of fuel if we ever had an emergency. Phase 2 of the countywide fiber project, as you recall, the Board of Supervisors went into a, received a grant with All Points Broadband. The first year was $500,000 commitment that the board did, and they took that from the ARP funding. We are $150,000 for this year, and that again, will probably come from the ARP funding. That is the board's recommendation. I know that there are questions about where they stand, and we're trying to work with them on where, you know, they came and did a presentation to the board a couple of months ago, and had indicated that they were due to start, it's supposed to kind of start northwest and move to the east. And I don't know if, you know, what their, their status is. And so we're gonna, we're gonna have more information that we'll present to the Board of Supervisors on where, where things are. Evaluation of Ralph Bunch High School for Needed Renovations, evaluation complete, and the presentation was made to the Board of Supervisors. As you recall, there's a number of facilities that we have, like Ralph Bunch, we have the courthouse. What are we gonna do with the old courthouse once the new one is built? Also, what are we doing with the, the old middle school? So those two, numbers two and three are all kind of one in the same project that got, that got approved by the board. Ralph Bunch came back, it's the first one done. You're looking at about $7.5 million in improvements that have to be done to Ralph Bunch. And so there is a committee that has been formed, the Board of Supervisors set up a committee of citizens, and we have two board members, Ms. Cupka and Ms. Bender that serve on it, Mr. Clark is actually on one of the committees, and is a member of that committee, or subcommittee, I should say. And then Mr. Minor is also on that committee. And so what they're doing now is working with the community leaders, you know, to identify what the next stage is. We do have a project that we'll obviously talk about here in a second, that we're recommending, you know, be funded as part of our CIP as a grant. But there still remains obviously a desire within the community to, to repurpose that building and to make it into some kind of a community museum type situation. So the old middle school and the existing courthouse, obviously, the existing courthouse, there's a need probably for space from this building to move folks over into as offices. But you do obviously have a historical society museum there, and so I, I would imagine that there'll be some element of that that stays in there. The old middle school, you know, there's a lot of options that you could do. You could continue to let it be for educational purposes, and we work with the school board on that. Or is it something that opens it up for recreation? Or is it something that you see if there's an interest privately? So the county has some options there. It's a big parcel of property, if anybody is familiar with it. It goes back, it's not just the school. So, you know, the county definitely has an interest in getting a review of that. So as I said, the Rivercomb Parking Lot and paving and drain, drain tile, the tile has been complete, and the parking lot paving starts on this Friday. And that was one that the board had recommended get put in there. ADA Accessible Playgrounds, we ordered that for June of 2022. And those are the projects that the board added on top of what your priorities were as well. Is that it? You need to shut me off? Need to go first, okay. All right, so I guess they, they thought it would be nice of me to go first. Heather likes me, I guess, I don't know. She could have put me way at the bottom, but that's, that's fine. So the administration, you know, we, we have a couple of projects that we are just kind of heading up, it's more of a, you know, task responsibilities. It's not something that, and these will be handled by different people, but do we have a, do we have those on there somewhere? Or do you have that in front of you?
The, the projects?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the first one I would go down is Ralph Bunch Hazardous Mitigation. So one of the things that came back in the report that the engineering firm, and we use Wiley Wilson, they came back and they identified the various things that needed to be improved, was mold remediation, that's a, that's a priority. And they also have some exterior cracks, you know, issues with the foundation, those kind of things. And so what we're recommending is, we will pursue a grant in the amount of 500,000 that would address those, those type of costs. We are calling it necessary, I mean, that's our recommendation, is necessary or urgent. I know that the board or the committee is working towards a number of other projects, but those would be also funded through grants, but they wouldn't necessarily have a match. So that's what we are asking for in, in that, in that project.
If I may, Mr. Miller, just, just to kind of get a better idea, so is the $500,000 for the mold remediation, is that in addition to, or is that over and above the $7.5 million total?
No, that would be like, that was part of the seven and a half.
Okay.
And so when the seven and a half, they were looking at everything, but their first recommendation was, you gotta deal with the mold, you gotta deal with the surface cracks and the, you know, the foundation and that kind of stuff. So this is a request for, this is to, almost like a placeholder in the sense, we're gonna get a grant, and we're gonna try to get a grant for $500,000.
Okay.
And if we don't, you know, then the project will have to be funded, you know, operationally.
Right, right.
Okay. And let me skip to number three, which would be the Ralph Bunch Maintenance Building Roof. I mentioned to you, in the grant that we asked for $500,000 and we received, it was to do that, you know, to do all of the facilities. They came back when, you know, the contractors, obviously, that we're working with, came back and said, you know, you, basically, the entire portion of your 500,000 is gonna go to the main building. So that left us out. We had to make a decision, and the maintenance building is not, was not included in that roof grant. And that's why we're coming back and asking for the 140 to do the, to do the, the maintenance building. And then I think the other project that's on there from, from administration standpoint, and this is the King George Middle School Turn Lane, this is a way out there, $580,000, that's That's 2026. What we've been told by David Beal for, with the Virginia Department of Transportation is that's the soonest they could get it. And so we've put a placeholder in there for that. And I, Bryce, did you, did Travis update you at all on that? Or do you know enough about that? Okay. Okay. But it is one of the critical ones that everybody knows you gotta get something in there to, to deal with the, the traffic situations at the middle school. So. And those are the three administration main projects. Again, it's, these will be handled by different departments, but you know, overall, we're kind of the ones that are pushing it.
Okay.
At my level. I'll answer any questions that anybody may have.
Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Miller?
Just, just to clarify, the hazardous mitigation, 500, you're not asking for matching funds? It's just a straight out grant?
We're asking for a grant of $500,000. What, what is the match? There's no match. There was no match on the, on the roof. So we just have to place it in a, in, in the CIP.
I think I misheard you. That's fine. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Miller. How are you?
How are you?
Well, thank you. Try to put this in, call a probability of when, what's the, the feeling that, that we're gonna do okay with these grants? Is it a positive feeling? Do we feel like it's an uphill battle or?
You know, I think that, I think that there, because you got that one for the roof, I, I think that there's a real interest in that what I can see and what I'm, you know, in talking to people is there is a very big interest in trying to restore Bunch and to get it to a place. And I think when you talk about doing things like addressing foundation issues or addressing the, the structure in some way, and then the mold remediation, obviously there's, that's kind of, those, those, those things do get funded. And I think that there's a real good vibe that's coming out of this committee that they, they're gonna be able to pursue a combination of either, you know, grants through federal agencies, National Park Service, or, you know, specifically branded towards certain type buildings, historic communities, you know, African American type, you know, funding channels. But also I think that there's a belief that they have some private money that they might be able to leverage to, you know, kind of do a pot of a bunch of different sources. So I, I think that it's a, it's a positive thing.
Who, who provided the, the funding as part of the first grant? What?
Is it the national, was it the National Park Service? Mr. Clark indicated it's the National Park Service African American Heritage Fund. And that's one I assume they'll pursue after, for the other portion of it too. So.
So for the middle school turn lane, do we have to put any kind of, I promise, in the budget with VDOT or they just say, hey, they, they put us on the?
Yes.
On the list? So there is a monetary amount?
That is, yes.
Well, in the out years, but I mean, for this year's budgets, we have to put down 50,000 or anything like that to hold our spot?
It's, it's essentially you get it in your capital. This is what they're saying our portion would be, but it's not gonna be for, you know, till 26, 27.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want, I, I saw the article in the Freelance Star in December about all the grant money that the county has gotten. I just wanted to thank staff and everybody for all that work that has gone into that on behalf of my neighbor, my neighbors in the Dogon, Dogon District. Thanks to everybody for that.
You bet. Well, thank you.
Absolutely. Well said, sir. All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate it. Now, if we're going in the roster, I believe Mr. Dines is up next.
Mr. Parker, we started with administration, but next would be parks and rec or the schools.
Okay.
Just so we don't forget those two very important. All right. Schools is volunteered. We gotta take her.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission members. Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
I'm Jesse Boyd, serving now as Deputy Superintendent for King George County Schools. I'm happy to be with you this evening. You guys may be accustomed to seeing Dr. Benson. He's announced his retirement now about a month ago. So he's at home with his grandkid and I'm here with you guys. So appreciate your time. Jumping right in, the first item that we had on our CIP was the recommendation for a preschool. And speaking with Dr. Benson, the $25 million price tag on that is currently just, just a placeholder. And speaking with Mr. Miller and Ms. Hahn earlier this week, I believe, maybe step one in that process would be to take a look at a feasibility study. Mr. Miller mentioned earlier the possibility of the old middle school or maybe some other property in the community that could be used for the preschool. Just to put some, some context to that request, I have a few slides here showing you the current building we use at preschool. This is on St. Anthony's Road. You guys are probably familiar with this facility. Right now it houses our early childhood special education, our peer model program and our Virginia preschool initiative, which are two through five-year-old students. Next slide. Oh, I got that. All right. So as you guys can see up in the left-hand corner, this building was built in 1939 and Franklin D. Roosevelt was the president at that time. So that's how old this building is. And what you see on the left is the dedication plaque for that building. On the right-hand side was the original, what's called the original B-wing. This is the exterior to the building. If you're looking at the building from St. Anthony's Road, this is off to the left-hand side. And a lot of the outside face of this building has, has areas that look like this. This part of the building was removed in 1980, I was told. Another part of, or another request in our capital improvement plan is depending on the amount of time it would take to secure a new preschool, there are sections of this current building that have roofing requirements. There were a couple of sections of this building that had the roof replaced 10 years ago. These sections in the picture were not replaced during that time. They're a bit older than that. And you can see there, there's some spongy areas that currently leak into the building. This is the outside windows of that facility and you can see that there's been some Band-Aids put on over the years. Stucco around the, the windows are deteriorating currently. And then our window AC units that have been provided for air conditioning, which way back in 1939, they didn't need. That's how we keep the building cool now. Interior walls of the preschool, you can see there's some very rough-looking spots. The original Lathan plaster walls continue to degrade and we're trying to stay on top of them as best we can, but it's, it's an ongoing project. The bathrooms in the facility are not climate controlled. So you can see there's, after the, after the fact, there's been air condition, no air conditioning units, but heaters installed in there just so we can keep the pipes warm. The fire alarm is a really cool-looking thing to come check out if you haven't seen before. It does not have a dialer to notify EMS, but it does have horns and strobes to alert folks to exit the building. And those big fuses on the top, I've, I've never seen before, but those are very difficult to find now as well. And then finally, you know, these are the students that we serve there in that building every day of the school year and our preschool teacher of the year up in the right-hand corner. So I'll stop there on the preschool project. I can certainly address any questions related specifically to that or just continue on, Mr. Chair.
Any questions or you wanna go through?
How many students do you have in that?
About 100 throughout the day.
100?
Yeah.
Wow.
With those different programs.
So in prior years, we've made comments about the school. There's a lot of several school properties, right? This one, the old, the old middle school. It's been mentioned in the past about the school putting together a plan, a long-range plan. Have you made any progress towards that?
In the terms of?
How to use those facilities, scheduling the replacement, just any of the planning associated with this.
I think that's where we are now to my understanding, being on this, in this position for about a month now. I'm not quite sure as to what's taken place prior. I know that what I believe the next step is, is, is that feasibility plan or taking a look at possible other locations like the middle school or other properties in the county where this facility could be located. But from everyone I've spoken to, I think that building is, is kind of reached its time.
Have you guys done projections on what you think the rest of the school system needs will be in the coming years? High school, middle school, grade schools?
I, I know the county's growing. It's my understanding in speaking to Dr. Benson that potentially in the near future, a possible fourth elementary school is being discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions on the preschool?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Continuing on, Potomac Elementary School is currently the only elementary school that does not have an ADA accessible playground. So in that, in our plan or our request, we mark that as necessary. Annually, we, we request a need for additional school buses. Every year, it's my understanding, after speaking to our Director of Transportation, somewhere in the ballpark of four to five school buses are requested every year. So what we do, to my understanding, is take a look at the buses that are oldest in year, have the highest number of miles on them. And in order to keep them out of our repair bays, replace them with newer school buses We are requesting an improved access system to Potomac Elementary. Potomac Elementary right now is in need of improved control panels and lock, power panels so that we have centralized control of entering and exiting the building. And then finally, I discussed the roof at the current preschool. But finally, on that plan, there was a request for $500,000 for parking and driveway asphalt replacement, specifically at the school board office, the preschool, Potomac Elementary and King George Elementary parking lots. There's a, a number of areas that need to be repaved and some potholes that need to be addressed at those locations.
Wow.
I can stop there for any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Miss Bond, parking lots, driveways? 105?
I'm sorry?
105.
Parking lot and driveways? Yeah, that's the one I just mentioned. I believe that's a request for $500,000 specifically at the school board office, the preschool, Potomac Elementary and King George Elementary parking lots and driveways have some current maintenance needs. And those specifically are the repaving, striping and sealing the front office side of Potomac Elementary, repaving, sealing and stripping the section of King George Middle that was not completed as part of the renovation repair, seal and strip lots and other areas of the preschool facility.
I apologize. I do wanna go back to the, the preschool. So you're asking for a wedge, 25 million, hold that spot, but we don't really have results of any kind of analysis, any potential? So is it that we should reconsidering?
I think a safer bet.
Analysis first?
Correct.
And then look at budget after that?
I, I believe.
Because we've got it labeled as urgent, which is urgent for 25 million.
Right.
But we don't have any analysis.
Exactly. I, I think right now, in speaking with Dr. Benson, the next step, and then in speaking with Mr. Miller as well, the next step would be a feasibility study and taking a look at where we go with the project to get a better idea on what the budget of that project would be. And I think that's been estimated somewhere in the ballpark of $500,000.
Okay. I don't know how far I can go with this, but in my mind, that's kind of where we are is the, the 500K is the urgency. And then results of the feasibility study, you guys, you know, mix it all up, magic eight ball says, and then whatever that, that estimate comes out to be for the replacement plan.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Just as an aside, just wondering, how much worse condition-wise is the old middle school compared to the old elementary school? If it were, and, and where I'm going with that is, would it be possible to move the preschool from the old elementary school to the old middle school?
I, I think that's part of the consideration. I think the next step here is we're gonna do that. Did you wanna say something, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir. So that's the, the next one on the list is the old middle school. We'll, we'll get a sense of that. I, you know, I think that some people, you know, Mike Muncy, is there, you know, is it, it, it would have to be completely refurbished, is that correct?
Yes.
Because there were some?
It needs to be removed. Needs to make changes. That study was done, say, back in 2016 and it was like a, 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 wow.
I had heard.
Demo?
I had heard. Pardon, pardon me. I had heard there was a lot of mold, mildew issues in the building. Yeah. In other words, it's a real mess.
So I will say this, that that's, you know, once we get that study, that's something that we'll sit down with, with Dr. Boyd and with the schools and say, you know, here's an option. So, you know, I agree that the first thing should be the study and then we can address how to finance it and whatever, what it comes back to. So, and we had that meeting last week, so.
And not, and not trying to, not trying to push the, the conversation, but would it be better then for the first item, instead of preschool replacement, to put preschool feasibility study and then put that in there for, I mean, it's a, it's easier.
You just penciled in feasibility study for school buildings.
I, I think that makes sense.
It's easier to nibble on 500,000 than 25 million. Yeah, maybe we, maybe we just go that, that route. But yeah, gentlemen, any other question?
Just a general question. I, I think everything on your list is, you know, very legitimate and, you know, I, I wish there was enough money to let you do everything all at once. But on the access control system for Potomac Elementary, is that exterior entries?
Yes, sir.
Just a general question. Do, do individual classroom doors lock from the interior of the room?
From the interior part of the building?
Yeah. Does the teacher in the room have the ability to lock the door?
They can lock it with a key. It's different at different facilities right now, but they can lock it internally. That's what you're asking, with a key.
But, but there's no way for like, somebody in the school to lock down the whole place?
With, with the push of a button?
Electronically.
No, no, sir.
Okay. An article I read recently, and maybe I should stop reading, okay? The article I was reading was just saying that that's been a federal suggestion for a long time to, if you were to get an intruder in the building, to be able to at least slow them down from entering individual classrooms. Have, have you guys thought about that?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. I mean, we really, we go through a lot of training with crisis management and spoken with a lot of our emergency folks in the division or in the county with, when it has to do with crisis management. We begin the year with instructing all of our teachers to make sure that their doors are locked all the time. So closing them would allow them to lock. I'm certainly coming over from the high school right now. That, that's something that was easier to do at the high school. But every school facility, as you know, Potomac's an older building and has a different level of access.
I'm sure there's a lot of challenges to it, but you know, it's, you can't go a week without hearing about some incident. And it just seems like in this day and age, it'd be a very prudent kind of thing to address. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And Dr. Boyd, one more question, please? The ADA playground, are we up against any federal state mandated timeline that, that could suggest a, a different level of urgency if you're under a crunch? But if it's just something that, that we have to abide by? But if it's just something that, that we have to abide by and, and we've got some latitude in terms of time to complete, heck, there might not even be a mandate and I could be just spouting off.
Right. Not one that I'm aware of currently, but would certainly like to get those kids, specifically our disabled students, the ability to use the playgrounds that we have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions? Mr. Boyd, thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Parker, can we skip down to the sheriff and work our way back up to IT and let some of the departments that have only a few things on their list jump ahead of the longer list?
Sure.
Pretty pleased, thank you.
We know Mr. Dines is going to be with us all night anyway, so.
You just remember that.
I will. Thank you so much.
How you doing, Sheriff?
Good. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the, the planning commission. As a, just kind of an update and a reminder, the current VHF public safety radio system is more than 20 years old with inadequate coverage, inadequate capability and several crucial components of the system are beyond their end of life, which means it's no longer supported by manufacturer and parts are no longer being productive, produced. If you recall, we're requesting to upgrade the entire system to a 700 megahertz P25 trunked radio system. This system would not just be public safety radio system, but it would be a countywide radio system, meaning any department in the county that has a need for a two-way radio, two-way communication with any vehicle or personnel in the field. We've proposed this upgrade initially in a three-phase process to minimize any type of the fiscal impact to the county. Those phases would be, the first phase would obviously be for public safety, which would be the infrastructure and again, like I said, public safety. The second phase would be other county departments and personnel. And then the third phase would be the schools and school transportation. But some, some new information is developed that allows us to work with phase one and three, the schools and the public safety together in this, this one project. We can, we can lump them together, which would able us to fund one and three immediately and allowing the inoperability with the school buses during normal school operations, after school operations, if there are sporting events, and during any type of natural and man-made disasters, which we utilize those buses to, to move people to shelters and move people around. Phase two, which would be the community, uh, county departments and personnel, they can use the radios that we already have in use now and will be replaced by the new ones in phase one at little to no cost to the county at all down the road after we've gotten phase one and three in place. If you remember, some of the advantages to the upgrade would be multiple talk groups. We currently only have four channels to talk to dispatch, one for the sheriff, one for fire and rescue, and we, we share two tactical channels, which are only used when field operations are going and we don't want to congest the primary talk channels. We'll, we're going to get a better overall coverage and in-building coverage with the three additional sites that we're proposing. We got direct inoperability with the surrounding counties who all operate on a 700 megahertz system, except Wes Moreland, who is on a UHF system. The, we do have a radio and dispatch and a tri-band radios that do allow us direct communications with them though. We'll also have inoperability with other county departments, adding these departments will allow seamless operations during a natural or man-made disaster. We currently use the school buses, as I stated, for transportation of evacuees and do not have a direct contact and must devote a first responder with the radio to communicate with them during the first responder, taking the first responder away from their primary duties. And last but not least, we've got better security with the new radio system. Our current system has no security. Anyone can look up our radio information on the internet and program into an inexpensive radio and potentially disrupt our system and interfere with our calls. On the new system, radios will have to be authenticated before being allowed on the system. And should a radio get lost or stolen, the radio can remotely be disabled. The system would also have encryption to protect sensitive information going over the air, like patient reports when the ambulances are on their way to the hospital or deputies receiving information about a possible wanted subject that they're dealing with. Right now, moving forward with Motorola, they've given us a proposal that we're in concert with Mr. Miller and Donna. In reference to that, that again, like I stated, we can, we can lump phase one and three together and get this project up and, and running. I would like to keep this as a, I know critical's not part of the description, I guess urgent slash critical because we're basically at the end of life with the, the components that we have with our system. So I can answer any questions if you have any. Or at least I could try to answer the questions.
More of a statement, sorry. So. Remember you from last year, went well, but is it that the, the system just was not procured last year, which is why we're putting it in this year's budget? Because I thought it all went smoothly last year. Sorry.
I had that same question just from.
So, um, yes, you know, obviously this is deja vu. It, it has all gone well. The, the problem that we identified obviously is you did go out and do a competitive bid in this kind of a situation is really a, a, you, you're going to get apples to oranges. You might get different companies. And so the Motorola folks, the sheriff and, and, and the fire and rescue, you know, that's the one that needs to be in here. And so we tried to get away on a competitive contract that they had with Suffolk County, but it was too old. And so then it was like, you know, our attorney had, had said, you have to match whatever they're doing with what you're getting. And that's a true way of doing the cooperative purchasing and, and, or piggybacking on another contract. That did not happen. And so we have kind of got to this point. And obviously, keep in mind too, that the, that the Board of Supervisors, you know, finally were able to approve the CIP in November. So that did kind of cut our window down to less, you know, a little over six months. But I know the sheriff would have loved to have had that thing built, you know, ready to go the, the day after the board approved it. But we did have some contract issues that we had to try to work through. Am I characterizing that correctly, Ms. Hawn?
And over that timeframe, we've worked with Motorola representative to use the state of Virginia. The Virginia Information Technologies Agency has a contract with Motorola that can be used by localities. And so then we had, needed to work with Motorola to come up with the pricing to match that contract. So then you do have the apples to apples. And so we're at that point now where we're ready to move forward. And we did build, as Mr. Miller stated earlier, we did build financing payments into our operating budget so that we would have funds to pay for this, once we get started on it.
All right, so, so make sure I got it clear in my head. We did finally find a contract vehicle that'll work. So we're not looking at 11.9 million hit to the budget directly because we're going to be able to break that up over years?
Yes, we're working with our financial advisor, Kyle Lauks with Davenport, to go out for funding for this project. And the payment terms will be specified at that time. But he has given us the ballpark figure that we would need to, you know, in order to pay for that financing.
Well, heck, Sheriff, that sounds like a better deal than last year. You just have to wait a little bit longer.
Make that clear that, so this would be a, a big financing?
Yes.
Right, so it's not broken out over several years that we're going to fund it over seven, over several years. We're going to do it in, in this year as part of those financings that I talked about. And so they will have the funding. Now, how it's built out would, you know, there'll be a fund that they can pull from over multiple years as they build this out. Because the first step is to build the system. Then it's going to be concentrated on phase one, which is the emergency and the, and the public safety folks. Then the next step would be the, the schools. And then the third step is the other county departments. So that's where I, I guess when we talk.
Okay, so the county will set aside the lump sum and then the sheriff's department will manage the, the pieces of the financing they're on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any fraction of grant money in there or not?
We couldn't find any.
No, okay.
Nothing that would fit in that square hole.
Yeah, Sheriff, we were just talking, this has been at least five, at least five years.
My Sheriff Dempsey was the one that kicked it off. I'm kind of coming in behind it.
Yeah, I know we've seen this for a long time and it's definitely overdue. So glad it's moving in the right direction, it sounds like.
We are too. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again.
Next, we have Mike Newtchuck, Director of Solid Waste.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission.
Good evening.
Uh, this is a request primarily for our department. It's also going to be utilized secondarily by General Properties. Beginning in fiscal year '22, Department of Solid Waste and Recycling received additional maintenance responsibilities as a result of the 17th Amendment to the host agreement. One of these responsibilities is to maintain, grind and provide access to the brush disposal area that's available to county residents at the Sealestin Convenience Center. Uh, this is the backside of our brush miller. Uh, this is the front side where, where brushes deposited and that's the only access road right there. And so what happens is people will drop off brush right there. And if you get six loads, it creates a barrier. Uh, and so nothing can go back behind it. So what we're utilizing is our only piece of equipment over there. We have a backhoe that we need to run the center. It's being used to push back, uh, push back brush from the road to give residents adequate space to dump. But its underside is protect, unprotected. In the last 12 months, we've lost hydraulic lines and fittings. The oil pan of the new CAT 420 is a composite resin, which is a terrible idea because that's a hard plastic. A piece of wood went up into it and I think it was $2,400 to replace it. Uh, we've also lost a hydraulic accumulator that was also unprotected. Uh, and so just in, in the last calendar year, we've had over $5,000 in damage to the backhoe. And it's, it's essential to the point that we can't operate the center without it. Uh, we utilize open top 40-yard compact, excuse me, open top 40-yard containers and that backhoe is what compacts the, the trash down into them. If it isn't compacted, your lifespan on a Saturday is about probably two to three hours and then it fill up. We also use it to lift metal into the recycling containers and to push the 40-yard containers back into position after they're moved by the roll-off truck. Just for example, the most recent damage to the backhoe was to the oil pan. It was down for a week. We had to get another machine in. In this environment, it's, it's difficult to get an immediate replacement. We lucked out, we had a, a good relationship with a vendor. He was able to get us an old machine in very short notice. But without it, we, we would have had to shut the gate. And if the backhoe goes down on a Saturday, you probably got about four hours if you can't get another machine or, or get it fixed. So what we're looking at is a compact track loader. I mean, they have tracks that will provide enhanced traction in the muddy environment of the convenience center's brush disposal area. And the undersides are also armored to protect it from damage. Uh, attachments like brush crapples are also available to facilitate the movement of brush. Uh, that's, that's actually the G-series forestry model from John Deere. The, the starting price on that's about 110, but just wanted to give you an idea of what we're looking for. And it had a brush crapple on it. We'd be looking for a smaller unit, ideally something like a Takahuchi with a roll-up door that wouldn't cause you to have a door replacement every three months. Uh, General Properties would also be able to utilize this machine. It would probably be something maybe like 80, 20 between our departments. They could use it to pot snow, burying storms, clean up debris, most stormwater management ponds with a mower attachment, maintain the walking path at the Sedell Brooks Junior Park with a tiller conditioner attachment and perform routine field maintenance. Uh, another different make of a machine, there's an AS, uh, ASA, and they have telescoping booms on some of their units, I believe. You gentlemen have any questions or can I be any further assistance?
So Mr. Newtchuck, for the, um, you said we had 5,000 in damage. How much was the rental for the replacement one? How much did that cost?
1,000. Uh, it was, it was, it was an older machine. It was not an ideal machine. It was, had no cab. Um, it had a kind of a slowly leaking hydraulic system. That bugger's couldn't be chosen.
Right. Wow. Just thinking that it sounds like in the long run, it'll probably pay for itself pretty quickly.
You know, an absolute, it's a, as you know, we had the additional responsibilities brought as a result of the 17th Amendment. So in the past, waste management had everything from rubber tire loaders to D6s. They could break down and move brush. You know, this would be our, our cost effective alternative to that.
Questions? All right. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming on, Mike.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Next, we have Mike Muncy with General Properties, Director of General Properties.
Good evening.
Evening.
First on the list, I've got the replacement of the upstairs unit here at the Rubber Cone Building. Currently, this unit, we've replaced, as of yesterday, five small, there's two compressors in this unit. We've replaced five of the smaller compressors, two of the larger. This unit is 28 to 29 years old. It's, it's reached its life capacity.
So it was original to the building?
Yes.
Wow.
We replaced the downstairs unit about seven or eight years ago. So this one's due to be replaced. Right now, um, we have a select contract with Train. So we're not coming out of pocket with a lot of this money. But to a point, they're going to, I mean, they're saying that the unit is shot, but they're still honoring their contract with us. Right now, up to this date, with the refrigerant, the R22, which is the old, which is being discontinued, you're looking at what they've spent so far this, this calendar year, right at about $70,000. Their recommendation, like I said, is to replace the unit, new line sets, new indoor coil and total replacement of the unit. I just don't know how much longer this unit is going to last. I, I feel like we're just putting Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid, so.
So the, the 70K this year's so far covered by warranty, but we don't know how long.
By warranty, yeah.
But we don't know how long.
That's just parts.
Yeah, okay.
That's not including their labor, you know. And we're, we're not paying that. Like I said, we're on a select contract with them. This building, the courthouse, the library and the sheriff's office.
Wow.
And then secondly, I'm looking, or I'm asking to replace or move us closer to the county line. Right now, we're at 10964 Bloomsbury Road. Uh, we're leasing a building there out by the landfill. We're probably about three miles from the Stafford County line, where before we were more centrally located here in the county. It's right now with gas and everything. I was just looking at my gas report today. I'm projected to be right at about 20, probably $26,000 for the year. My line item for that this year is 17,000. So with that, and we're spending $22,000 a year on the lease and it's a three-year lease every time. I'm thinking that, you know, we move into the county closer, it would definitely save us a lot of money. We're looking at the site right there at the service authority that the county already owns. Of course, we'd have to do like a soil survey to make sure the ground's acceptable, you know, to put a building on. Back in March, I looked at the cost of a building. It's basically the same size of what we're leasing right now. It's 40 by 96 with an eve height of 15 foot. And that building at that time was 127,000. Like I said, and I put a price of 350,000, but that doesn't include, like I said, I know we're going to need site prints, you know, engineer prints, MEPs, so.
There's space back there in the service authority?
There is down that hill. And there's also another space over behind the, the old elementary school where the Quonset hut is. That. that used to be the old bus garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The county owns that also.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that would be a a good spot, too.
Could you use the old bus garage building itself? I know they're doing like milling.
Right now, right now, the school utilizes that.
Okay.
That building, and that would be a great idea. Uh, you could build a pole barn to put all of our equipment in and just refurbish that building. That would work also. But like I said, right now, the uh school maintenance uses that building.
And it looks like there's a bunch of asphalt trucks and stuff that have been using it.
I think they're just like a repaving project or resurfacing, and I guess they let them use that.
Yeah.
The area. Any questions?
Gentlemen?
Mr. Moss is thinking.
Yeah, so I'm I'm just thinking break even point. About 10 years? So if you did the investment.
Yes.
It's about a 10-year break even point.
Nine to 10, yeah.
Sorry, thinking out loud.
No, you're fine.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Muncie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll go next, if that's okay, Mr. Park.
Oh, sure.
I am. I'm going to stay over here, keep my cold to myself, if that's okay. Department of Community Development, 25, 2027, next slide. The age-old problem in community development is the lack of technology and capabilities to make our records and documentation available to our customers and our citizens. With the board's approval of a new permitting system during the last CIP requests, we have made the first step in making that change. Now, we would like to continue in that process by having all of our current records scanned and made available to be shared with the public. Next slide. Pictured here is our current method of document storage. All documents within this space are public record. And at this time, the only method for viewing these records will be to come in person to our office and search through the files and check them out for copies, or submit a FOIA request and pay the associated fee to receive copies of those records. As you can imagine, the inconvenient process of obtaining these records is a common complaint within our department. Next slide. Our new permitting program, Municity 5, will go live next month. All newly submitted parcel file and permit records will be entered into the system and available to the public via an online, public-facing portal. However, without scanning and uploading into the current paper records within our office, any documentation and parcel history prior to the new permitting system will not be readily available to the public. Next slide. Once live in Municity 5, our department has every intention on utilizing this program to its full capacity capability. Without having our parcel files and records scanned and uploaded into the system, we would be decreasing the efficiency of this program. As of now, no historical parcel data will be available in our new system, aside from data uploaded from our current AS400 system or GIS. Pertinent records to include site plans, boundary line adjustments, rezonings, et cetera, will currently not be on record and available to research in our new system because the files will not be available electronically. Next slide. I'm sure you're questioning why community development has been hoarding all of this paper. The most concise answer is that we are required to, per the Library of Virginia Record Retention Schedule, our office is required to maintain most of our zoning, building, and construction-related documentation for a minimum of three to five years. Some documents are required to be kept permanently. Right now, our office is literally at capacity when it comes to storage. Having these historical files scanned and uploaded into our new Municity 5 system will not only make records more available, but this will also open up space within our office. Next slide. In short, our total monetary request is 70,000. We've been in contact with at least separate, three separate companies that are capable of scanning our documents and uploading the documents into a proper fashion for our new system. This request amount would cover pickup, storage, multi-size document scan, indexing of files so that they could be accessible. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Just for existing records?
That is our current existing records. Once they set this up, we have staff, as well as, um, if you remember CARES Act, we were able to obtain um a large document scanner so that we will be able to take over at that point and maintain.
And I'm sorry, Heather, did you, you said this is a, this is kind of a compliance-driven purchase, right? We have to do this.
Right. We cannot just get rid of documents. It has to be in accordance with the Library of Virginia.
Once you scan them, can you get rid of the paper copies?
Yes, as long as we have those electronic documents, or at minimum, we can put them in a a storage, off-site storage. Um, ideally, what we would like to do is have an interface with Municity 5 and our GIS so you, Mr. Kendrick, could click on your property that you own in the county and pull up any uh surveys that have been submitted, any rezoning requests, things of that nature, or any property that you might be interested in purchasing. We get a lot of those phone calls. I mean, it's it's quite a timely task for our staff. That could be easily done electronically.
Do I feel better now? Because it said a scanner, and I was thinking a $70,000 scanner. That's pretty good.
I'm sorry, that's it.
Scanning services, so now I get it.
I'm sorry.
Do these documents have to be vetted for personal information before they get put into a public system?
Um, most everything that is in our office is a public document, um, with the exception, I believe, of phone numbers. But as far as um your survey of your property, um, the size of your home, things like that, that's all public information.
Right. I wouldn't consider that private information. I would consider that public information, but there are often, you know, like uh, personal identification type things that that could be a uh an encroachment onto privacy.
And that's something we can certainly take into consideration, request of that company.
Okay, so that would be on your end after that stuff gets scanned.
Or it could be part of our procurement process to require them to block that information out.
Okay.
And um, that is a typo that should be for this fiscal year, not 25, 27. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Probably Donna. Oh, it's you.
Ooh. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. Um, up up next is Mr. Patient Kristine, Director of IT.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Distinguished members of the Planning Commission. I have seven things for our department that I've requested for this year. We've talked over some of these things you have seen before. My first request is for our network management system again. And that contains our cybersecurity physically that protects our network. We use a Sophos Advanced Management Threat Protection. And that's on every piece of equipment that we have, laptops, computers, servers. That's also included with our Labtech Network Monitoring System. And that patches and does antivirus as well, web filtering with our servers and desktops and laptop. The next piece that goes with that is the Connectwise Remote Desktop Service. So that allows us to connect to a computer. If someone puts a help ticket in, we can, instead of having to drive to come back to the admin building or one of the other offices, we can connect to their computers remotely through a secure connection. And we can look at their screen and fix whatever errors they might be going through or any issues. Um, the next is the Barracuda email firewall. You have a natural firewall with our Office 365 from Microsoft, but we wanted to have more protection for users. And so we have the Barracuda as well. It's all tied in, and it's for the spam and malware control. And so we have currently 300 county user mailboxes. We don't have that many exactly. We're at about 290. So we like to keep just a few more as some of the offices grow, and that way we can add uh to that number. But 300 should be good for a little while for us, I think. And last is our Veeam Network Backup Service. And what that is, it replicates the key servers that we have, Sheriff's Office, Fire Rescue, our finance. And it, every half hour, it will take data and put it to our secure locations right near the airport in Richmond. And it's uh, it's guarded by armed guards, and there's virtual machines there. There's a rack just for us. And all the data is there. So if anything ever happens, if the county was in a catastrophe situation and we had nowhere to reach that data through the internet, you could drive over to a secure room and have laptops set up, and you could be able to use the information that's on that server and work. Our next one, and that's 256,000. And thanks to Donna's shrewd business acumen, she kept that the same that it was for 225 users, so. Now, I did, you might see an escalator in that line item. Donna suggested we do 5% just in case. But normally, this this group from a proactive, which manages that part, that gives us those services, they uh, they usually don't go up in their price, but she said put it in there anyway because you never know what could happen, especially with the way things are now, the economy. Our next request, as you see usually every year, is for computer replacement. And, you know, as I've been in before you and stated, we normally try to do five years for everyone to have their computers refreshed after that time period. And we want to make sure that they're updated with the latest versions of software. Like right now, we use Windows 10. And so we also want to make sure that the warranty that we have on our machines, we usually get five years for our machines. And so we want to make sure that we're always in that service, so if something breaks, it can be repaired. Uh, usually, the people will come on site, and you get free parts, and they'll come in and uh replace it. So that's all part of when we order from a CDWG for the most part. And this year, that kind of higher than normal, simply because we're going to concentrate on the fire rescue. Uh, Chief Basham does a lot of the things over there with their computers, and they have a few that are a little older. So I said, we put it in my budget for this project. And there should be a few left over for our normal replacement, but we did a lot this year. That we're trying to give people laptops so that if something happens, our users can take them home and work from home. So they're all on a secure VPN client when they work from home. And so that works out well for most of the staff. The third request is, you've also seen this one before. It's our cybersecurity. And it kind of changed a little bit from last year. We kind of scaled back and went with this same company, Asura, and they're based out of Richmond, right outside Richmond. And so what we're doing with us, as Mr. Miller stated, we had a tabletop exercise last Friday. And so they're working with us to train our staff on what to do and make sure we all have our roles that we play. There's a big initiative in the state that deals with mainly election. It started with the election security, but it's been pushed to all other localities. And so I'm on a board with the Virginia Local Government and information technology executives. And we have been meeting with VIDA, VDEM, and the Fusion Center and state officials to go over the process for submitting things that might happen. Uh, some of the localities have been hit with ransomware and things like that. And so there's a big push to make sure that all the counties have all of their resources with VACOR so that they need any help, get to have money there just in case, and you have to have a plan and make sure you execute your plan, and everybody knows how to to work within the the precepts of what's what's needed to make sure that all the states' entities are clear of any bad actors. Um, there's always people trying, so you have to keep up with it as much as you can. And I expect to soon, they will start sending people out to do audits. So you have to have all your information documented and have guidelines so that they know that you know what to do. And if someone doesn't know, they can have a resource to go to. And that new law began July 1st, uh, last week, so. And we want to make sure our u- our citizens, we have their data safe. You know, we could, we keep a lot of important data, like you were saying, with like our financial system, like when the when the people pay online for their bills and things like that, all that has to be secure. And so you have to make sure the people have faith in that and that their data integrity is kept. The fourth request was for a redundant phone system server to be placed at the sheriff's office. We would like to have a replica of the server that we have here that runs our VoIP phone system. And we were going to put that at the sheriff's office. And we are, we actually had a outage after an upgrade. And our VIA engineer came in, and the phones were out for about two or three hours in the morning. Yeah, yeah, two hours in the morning. So we had to put out KG alerts and let everyone know. So we'd like to have it so that if something happened here and he came back to do an upgrade here first, if anything happened, the server at the sheriff's office would automatically take over and handle all the transactions from the SIP connections. So that's part of our redundancy plan that you might remember we started a few years ago. So that's trying to get to that level. My fifth request for our department is the, this is important as well, the GeoEnhance 911 SIP compliance software. So there's been some things that have gone on in the country that have caused the FCC to have some federally mandated uh compliance. So the engineer will place the address information of software on our server. And this was prompted by Carrie Hunt Dunn. I don't know if you know about her, but she was in a hotel in one of our states, and she was with her young son. And someone broke in her room and unfortunately, uh, shot her. And the little boy picked up the phone, but he couldn't directly dial 911 to get help. He had to dial like 55 or something else. So there's a law where every phone is supposed to be able to dial 911 wherever you are to make sure it goes straight through. Then on top of that, there's Ray Beam's Act. And that that states that if I call from a phone in my office, the 911 And that that states that if I call from a phone in my office, the nine one one emergency dispatch can know exactly what office I'm calling from. Because if you're familiar with SIP, it's a direct connection, it's a session, Internet protocol. So it's just like when you send an email, you're sending that data to someone. The phone call is the same kind of concept. So if I'm calling for my extension, they'll know exactly where to go if emergency services needs to come help you. So that's supposed to have the exact dispatchable location. So they don't have to run around the building and say, okay, do you know where this one number came from? Instead of trying to ask someone, they'll know exactly where to go. And our Sheriff's Office already does provide our responders with that, but this will make sure that it will be specifically to an office. So all of this has to be complied with by 2023. So we'll be ahead of the game before that happens. So we'll be compliant. This one is our System Rock Equipment Maintenance. You've also seen me before ask with our many switches, security devices, wireless access points. We even have climate control, environmental, the kind of sensors that we have. You can sense if there's water, humidity, the air conditioning is out in the server room, we get alerted and then we can take care of it. So it kind of like monitors all that kind of thing and it comes with the cloud services and system managers. And we also have cameras too. Not every office has them, but we've tried to get some cameras. Also, with this upgrade for the maintenance, it will allow you to get the service from Meraki's upgrades as well. And they have a lot of updates that run through in the middle of the night. So to make sure that the hardware and software is up to date. And it's vitally important because this is how we're connected to the Internet. This is how we're transmitting our data to the rest of our citizens or vendors. So it's it's a huge project that is vital. And what happens, we have so much of that equipment now and that's why it's kind of an expensive item because we have a hundred and fifty pieces, maybe a hundred and ninety pieces of equipment. And so even if you bought it in different years, it kind of puts it to one date, which is May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And so that is the day that that is up for contract renewal. So we want to make sure we can get it in before then. So that's why I put fiscal year twenty three, because we'll probably start it then so it'll be ready for when it turns May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And then the last item is just a little holding spot, just in case our sheriffs, our sheriffs, our courthouse, our new courthouse needs any extra equipment. I know it's going to be much bigger and there's a there's a large amount of money already built into technology for that building that will be split between the Supreme Court's equipment and ours. So we just wanted to make sure if we needed little pieces of things to finish the building off, that we'll be able to do that for the users or the judges or the lawyers. So. So the total cost is eight hundred and nineteen thousand. And that includes that two fifty down the line. I think for this one year, it's just five hundred and sixty nine. But that's for the total of that one added in as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Alan?
So item number six, that's more of like an O and M type of cost. Is should that really be, is that a capital?
I put it there because it's so much. I see what you're saying. But there was, it was a while before they finally told us, okay, this is your date that you need to have these, because we were buying equipment. And what was what was happening was when we had equipment and then we bought more for a new, for another office, then it moved the date. So first, this date was supposed to have been twenty twenty. But we had bought so much in between, they kept pushing the maintenance renewal date further back, so.
So when you set up the courthouse, you may be able to get that pushed out, maybe? I don't know.
No, I doubt it because I think this is drop dead because the first equipment that we bought was from two thousand sixteen or fifteen. It's been like six years. Normally you would have four years. But they really pushed it out, so.
And your redundant voiceover IP, are you you're putting that in the Sheriff's Office or you're putting that in the data center?
Well, we already have one upstairs in our server room upstairs. So we're going to put in an additional server and we'll have the licensing that we have upstairs for all of the whole county so that it can handle the calls and the licensing in case something happens here.
Okay.
So I have a question on the same line item. So for that two hundred and fifty thousand, does that cover us for a decade, five years?
I think it'll be another five years unless we get some more, a lot of new things and they might push it out again, I guess. That's a possibility, you know, but it would probably, it usually will be five years. Because I'm trying, we're trying to get things that are five years now. We first started out, we were trying and we were like, okay, we'll just do three years. And then as we liked the products, when we started to purchase more, then it started kicking us up to four and five. So we're pretty much five years now every time.
Any additional questions?
I just, I probably should have been scanning this while you were talking, but on item one, the network management systems, it's every year?
Yes, this is every year. It's another big item and that's why they put this here.
So it's not, it's not software, it's services?
Yes. The software is a software, the Labtech is a software and a program which is contains the ConnectWise. The Barracuda Email Firewall is a, like a cloud-based firewall. And Veeam is software that was the Echo, we used to use Echo and now we have Veeam for our replication of all the
But you're having to pay a service fee every year?
Yes, yes, that includes everything.
So that goes true for item three, your Virtual Information Security Office? That's sixty thousand a year. That's also services, I guess it is, training?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Always.
Next up, we'll hear from Parks and Rec with Director Chris Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Again, Chris Clark, Director of Parks and Recreation. I thank you for the opportunity to present the Parks and Recreation Proposed Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 2023 through 2027. I'd like to start with a little bit about our planning process for this year. Staff regularly reviews our parks and facilities to identify projects and improvements. In addition, public input is sought when developing recommendations. This year, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and the Department conducted a needs assessment. That data, along with the current adopted CIP, produced this year's proposed plan. As required in their bylaws, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee conducts a needs assessment every five years to assist with the development of parks, facilities and programs. For 2022, this entire process was completed in-house through the use of an Internet-based survey. Staff then completed a draft of the report based on the results and the PRAK edited, amended and approved the final recommendations. The highest priorities in the needs assessment were walking and biking trails, playgrounds, a walking track, picnic shelters, permanent park restrooms, natural areas and a recreation center. All of these are addressed in this year's proposed CIP. So specifics about the needs assessment, there were two hundred and eighty one responses representing eleven hundred and seventy six people. All election districts were fairly represented. Seventy point one percent rated the satisfaction of our parks as good or excellent and nearly ninety percent said the same about our programs. Sedell Brooks Junior Park and Sealston Sports Complex were noted as the two most important parks to our community. A full copy of this report will be available on the department's website and Facebook page, and I believe community development staff did forward it to you all. If they haven't, I'll make sure we get it to you after this meeting. With consensus of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, here is our proposed capital improvement plan. The acquisition of the one hundred and sixty six acres contiguous to Barnesfield Park and the two acre parcel Roseland House, along with the changes to Wayside Park due to the construction of the Thomas, I'm sorry, Harry Nice Thomas Mack Middleton Bridge, necessitate a complete master planning and development process for all four properties. Over the fiscal years twenty four, twenty four, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, we propose creating a complete master plan for the nearly three hundred and forty acres of parkland, as well as the development of new amenities as recommended by that master planning process. A draft site plan proposed by the PRAK is contained here in the slide. This item could address trails, playgrounds, picnic shelters and natural areas as requested in the needs assessment. It can also meet two items in the Tourism Strategic Plan, outdoor recreation product development and river access. Upgrading parks for sports tourism and regional collaboration are both goals of the Tourism Strategic Plan. In order to make our parks more attractive to tournament organizers and possibly apply for large national tournaments with our regional partners, batting cages and new and additional soccer goals are needed. Due to the age and deterioration of goals, the county does not have a sufficient number to host any large tournaments at this time. Batting cages would increase our marketability with our baseball and softball complexes for tournaments, as well as additional use for our local teams and leagues. This is a fiscal year twenty three recommendation. Separate from the master planning process is the need to add additional lighting to softball fields at Barnesfield Park. We are currently working on a bid package for the upgrade of lights to Field A that were approved in fiscal year twenty two. In FY twenty four, we propose adding lights to Fields B and C. In doing so, we would increase marketability of Barnesfield Park as a sports tourism destination, as well as increasing available hours for local programming. The 2017 needs analysis noted an off-leash dog park as a high priority. While not as highly ranked in 2022, this still is a staff-recognized need for our community. Currently, citizens will run their dogs off-leash at parks, which leads to fear amongst other park visitors, dog waste being left on sports fields and complaints to both Parks and Recreation Department and the Sheriff's Office. Creation of a safe, responsible location near the center of the county will benefit both dog owners and non-owners alike. This is a fiscal year twenty four recommendation for ninety thousand dollars. The needs assessment noted that access to playgrounds is a priority need. Sealston Sports Complex is our only large county park without a playground and we frequently get requests for one as young children have nothing to do when they attend events other than watch the games or practices of their other siblings. For fiscal year of twenty three, we propose adding a playground to the complex for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Staying on the subject of playgrounds, they have a safe, useful life of about fifteen to twenty years. The playground at Barnesfield Park was installed in the early two thousands and is proposed for replacement in fiscal year twenty four. This is an acceleration of one year from this year's current CIP. In 2019, a slide and swing were replaced and a new arch bridge was installed in December 2021. Both those repairs were fifty five hundred dollars respectively. Updating the playground to a safe ADA compliance structure for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars will add enjoyment for children, both in free play and when attending events in the park. In the current fiscal year, two soccer fields at Sealston Sports Complex will receive lighting. This will allow additional play by Parks and Rec Soccer and Travel Soccer Programs. In addition, we will be more marketable for tournaments using those fields. In FY twenty six, we seek to add the lights to the two remaining softball and baseball fields for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will increase our ability to host tournaments, as well as increase opportunities for our local programs, as cited both in the needs assessment and the Tourism Strategic Plan. Currently, Parks and Recreation holds an MOU with the School Board to utilize school facilities and non-school hours. This limits our indoor athletic programming for all ages to evenings and weekends due to the limited availability of facility space. Parks and Recreation proposes an FY twenty seven, a nine million dollar construction of a recreation center with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in planning work being completed in FY twenty six and FY twenty seven. This center will allow gymnastics, shooting clubs, wrestling and karate to all find a home in a modern space, as well as increase the available space for new and existing recreation programs. Additional use of the facility could include sports tourism and other tourism events, as noted in the Tourism Strategic Plan. That is a picture of the outside of the Quonset Hut, the backside of the building that Dr. Boyd was showing earlier. With the construction of the new picnic shelter at Sedell Brooks Junior Park underway and slated for completion later this year, we anticipate an increase in usage and demand on the park. This will include rentals of the shelter, as well as regular drop-in visits. Adding permanent restrooms to the park is a high priority in the needs assessment and would make the park more attractive as a tourism destination. A large portion of the three hundred and ninety five thousand dollar cost is for the laying of water and wastewater lines to the proposed precast concrete structure. It is our desire to complete this project in FY twenty four. While the entrance road to Sedell Brooks Junior Park was built to VDOT specifications, the parking area is not of the same quality. Due to high use and the fact that it is also the access to the Perkins Corner Wastewater Treatment Facility, the lot has developed a number of large potholes and other failures. Parks and general property staff have worked through the years to address these deficiencies, but a permanent solution is not viable until the wastewater plant is completely decommissioned. For that reason, the repaving of the lot is an FY twenty five priority, hopefully at five hundred thousand dollars, but we'll see where the economy takes us. Finally, the implementation of the King George County Trailways feasibility study has been a part of the county administrators' requests for the last few years and has now been moved to Parks and Recreation. For FY twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, we propose using a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to support walking and biking trails, shared use paths and other multimodal improvements. Working this year with the George Washington Regional Commission and the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization with the World Work Plan, we will rank these proposed trailway projects and begin to identify possible outside funding sources. CIP monies would then be used as either necessary local match or to complete low-cost improvements. And just in closing, I know Mr. Miller touched on a lot of these earlier, the listing of the park and facility improvements that are ongoing. We've utilized CIP, CARES Act, ARPA, recreation activity and tourism funds for these things. As we said earlier, the picnic shelter is currently under construction at Sedell Brooks Junior Park. The tennis center bids are under review and the lighting project bid documents are being prepared. We're also working on turf and has been said were funded in this year's general fund budget. Not making our recommendations this year were the repaving of the Citizen Center parking lot and the outdoor education center that has been on previous years. That was due to the results of our needs assessment that fell off our listing. I thank you again for the opportunity to present tonight and happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
So is gymnastics the main program at the Quonset Hut still?
Yes, gymnastics is what we have in the Quonset Hut. We offer our karate program and the shooting programs that partner with us, the small ball rifle and the archery programs use the cafeteria in the school board building.
Right, okay. And then the trailways feasibility, does that include the old rail, rail bed trail or not?
That is one of the items that is addressed in there. Obviously, they recently, so in the in the new state budget, DCR was directed through a budget amendment to do a suitability study by October about about the suitability of that trail becoming a part of Caledon State Park.
Okay.
We did recently conclude and will present to the board supervisors next week. We've been working for the last three years with the friends of the trail, the owner of the trail and my department and the National Park Service on a rivers, trails and conservation assistance, technical assistance program, where we've developed a concept plan. And so we'll show that to the board next week and then that'll be released to the public that hopefully will be used to public that hopefully will be used to sell, help DCR make the argument that the trail could become part of the state park system.
Great, thank you.
That's good, no? Gentlemen?
Just for the improvements, you spoke in a few different places about the opportunity to bring sports tourism. I'm assuming that your insight with the industry says if we make these improvements, then we really do move up the scale in terms of opportunities that'll be presented?
It's a true assessment. Yes, and so it's a difficult business. It's a hot topic around the region and the country. You can notice there's lots of places that are building large venues. When you go down to the Richmond area, they have very large venues. River City Complex in Truster Field County, where it's 15 turf fields for soccer, lacrosse. There's large groups. For us, we would need to run smaller tournaments, but you limit organizers based on daylight of how many games they can get in. And so like our slow pitch softball tournaments that had been being conducted at Barnesfield, they would love the opportunity to be able to do a longer tournament into the evening hours, but with only one field with lights, sunsets as far as they can get, you know, except for a game or two. So by adding more lights, it would allow us to have bigger tournaments be interested in our facilities.
How many tournaments do you actually get per year, various sports?
Last year for softball, I believe he did 11. And then we also hosted the state tournament for the nine to 11 Virginia Little League Championships. That rotates amongst the state, and having more ability to play than King George Little League would be able to apply for more of those tournaments.
Mars? Any further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, appreciate it.
Last, but certainly not least, this Chief Moody, Fire and Rescue and Emergency Services.
Evening, Chief.
Good evening to you. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, for those of you that do not know me, my name is David Moody, I'm the County Fire and Rescue Chief. We have requested four projects in our CIP. The first one is our, pretty much the same request that you see every year, and that is our ambulance replacement program. We have a total of seven ambulances in our department. And what I brought with me tonight in a presentation was just to show you some numbers from our 2021 annual report and kind of shows you what we're doing throughout the county. But about the ambulances, essentially, we are transporting, second. In total, we ran 393 more calls in 2021 than we did in 2020. This is an unprecedented number for our department. Typically, on average, if you were to say, how many more calls did you run where you called to this year than you were last year? On average, we're anywhere between 85 to 110 calls on average. 2021, we ran 393 more calls. You can see for EMS calls, these are medical calls, we had a couple hundred more EMS calls than we did in 2020. Transports, 2,236 transports, over 2,000 to Mary Washington. We also go to the freestanding emergency room in Lee's Hill. We did five transports to Stafford Hospital up near the Stafford Courthouse area, 90 to Spotsy Regional SRMC, and 19 to, that's in La Plata, the Charles Regional Old Sevista Medical Center. We do bring in, we do charge for transports. You can see 2020 is in the parentheses, we brought in right under 730,000. In 2021, we brought in 820, over 825,000. So from an ambulance standpoint, you know, my goal is to not come before this body, not become, come before the Board of Supervisors or the county administrator and say, you know, because of poor planning, we need, we need four ambulances all in one year. Because these ambulances are very expensive, the price that you see here, the $300,000 I'm requesting, that does not include the striker power load system in the back, does not include the stretcher. The striker power load system's right at 20,000, the stretcher's at 18,000, the heart monitor's at 30,000, the, certainly the dressings, the Band-Aids, the stair chair, stair chair's about $5,000, the mobile radio, which was part of the sheriff's radio package, but if we have to buy an independent radio, that's about $5,000. You can see that you're talking about roughly each ambulance close to a half million dollars by the time you're, you know, by the time you put everything on it. And these are pretty much mobile, mobile operating rooms, if you will. From the EMS call side, you can see, this is just a little bit of breakdown of what we're doing throughout the county, and this was in 2021. So over 262 motor vehicle crashes, this did not, this also includes 40 motor vehicle crashes overturned, three motor vehicle crashes, including pedestrians, four amputations, 25 cardiac arrests, eight suicides, and the list goes on. I'll leave that up there as I go, you know, go through the presentation. Any questions on our ambulances? Or EMS calls? I will say that we, on average, we respond, as we respond to these calls and we do the transports, on average, we're transporting roughly about eight times, eight to nine times per day to a hospital in a 24-hour period. We, as far as mileages, we try to rotate our mileages, rotate the units. We don't staff all seven at one time, and just like we've had, like I explained to people, we don't have the luxury to have units go out of service and they're waiting on parts. Right now, the parts is the real predicament that lots of fleet maintenance, people that are maintaining trucks and school buses and ambulances, and you can't get the parts in a timely manner. And so we have an ambulance right now, as an example, that was out at the beginning of June, it's still out today waiting on a part, and supposed to come in next week. But we don't have the luxury of calling like an enterprise rental and say, hey, we got an ambulance out of service, we got three of them out of service at one time, and can we rent an ambulance for a week or two? So you have to have a, you have to have some additional units in order to, you know, handle that surge and rotate around for maintenance purposes.
Chief, just wondering, what's the mileage range of the seven ambulances we have now?
Yeah, so they're in your report. If you look in your, in my report, I don't know exactly what you're provided with, but I can, our unit one has 100, it's 2014, it's 172,500. Unit two's a 2018, 76,500. Unit three, so 2019, 30,500. Unit four, 2016, 110,000. Unit five is a 2014, 126,000. Unit six, 2016, is 103,000, and unit seven's a 2018 with 47,000. We, on average, are accumulating close to 175,000 miles between, per year, between all seven units. Following this ambulance replacement program also puts us in line with a, you know, the state came in years ago and provided some recommendations and findings to the county about how to, you know, how to purchase your, these capital infrastructures, such as your fire trucks and ambulances. And this is, this follows their recommendation to essentially space it out and plan for funding, you know, for one, one per year. Now, we're a little behind because we did fund one last year, but we didn't fund one the year before. And so now we're playing a little bit of a catch-up game. I talked to our vendor today, and this gives you a little bit of perspective. If a decision was made tonight that, hey, we could purchase an ambulance and we had money, that ambulance wouldn't be ready for us until sometime in 2025. So that's, that's the lead time we're talking about. The ambulance that we have, we had funded for last year, still has not, the chassis still has not come from Ram, we don't know when it's going to come in. There is no ETA. And so that's, that's some of the, some of the uncertainty that we're dealing with. Any questions other than the mileages? I can...
Gentlemen, any? All right? There, sir.
The next project is the, is what's called an Opticom preemption system. This is a project and a program that we are, we are teaming up also with the sheriff's office, but our department would be taking the lead on it. Basically, what this, what this program is, is a infrared safety system that would go on every emergency vehicle, every fire truck, every ambulance, every sheriff patrol car, anything that has lights and siren would, would have this infrared control emitter. And it would tie into every intersection that we have here in the county, and the number of intersections that we have included is 14 intersections. And so whether you're in turn lanes, or whether whichever direction you're coming into the intersection, if an emergency vehicle has its, has its warning lights and has its siren and is coming and approaching to an intersection, that intersection is not, will, will, will sense that emitter and, and the intersection will turn green in the direction that that emergency vehicle's approaching it. So what's happening is that, you know, one of the biggest, one of the more greater risks that we have in our, in our, what we do to service the community is just getting there. And, and we take, we're taking a greater risk, it seems like, you know, week after week, month after month, and year after year, of crossing these major intersections with a 80,000-pound tanker truck, an ambulance go into a heart attack call, or the sheriff's office go into a domestic dispute, and, you know, try it on a Friday or Sunday on 301. You know, it's, I kind of compare it to like playing the old game of Frogger, you know, of trying to get, get across, but we're also dealing with lives. And, and so this is a system, this is, this is a tech, technology system. It's been proven. I think we should have had it years ago, but I certainly think as the county's getting busier, there's more traffic on the roadways, this is only getting to be more important. So happy to answer any questions about that project as well.
Hey, Chief, how are you? So with this system, 14 intersections in the county, what's its applicability going on these runs to the different facilities that we bring patients to?
Well, this, that, this is going to be more applicable for, for getting to the calls within the county. So this is not so much just transporting patients or responding to EMS calls, this is fire calls. Here's the fire, here's the fire numbers right here. But this is, this is calls all throughout, this is all throughout the entire, all throughout the entire county. So every intersection, every traffic light intersection that you go through in King George would have one of these receivers, and every vehicle would have an emitter. And as it's responding to a call, when somebody calls 911, they say, my house is on fire, my, you know, whatever the emergency is. As we're going down the road, one thing that we can assure is that the, the traffic lights would be in sync with our emergency vehicles. So, so what do we save? What do we save time? We can get there quicker. We save a possible collision. We save the public. If we're going to collide with somebody, most likely it's going to be a commuter. And I have seen, and I've been on accidents where emergency vehicles have collided with, with other, other, you know, cars, and it's not pretty. And I think that's, that's one of the hopes and goals, that it makes for a safer response, and also, you know, cuts back some time as well. I hope, I hope that answered a question.
Not exactly, but it helped me reframe my thoughts, so questions kind of OB at this point, so thank you.
Understood.
So these emitters work outside of the county too, right?
They will if a, if, so for example, I know Stafford has included these in their intersection, it would work in Stafford if you went to Stafford.
Well, if the county's put the equipment on their traffic lights, this emitter is sort of universal, it would work?
Yes, it is, correct.
I just wondered, why isn't this a VDOT thing? I mean, why wouldn't they do it? I'm just rhetorical maybe, but it seems like it'd be something that would be public safety.
Yeah, it ultimately comes down to funding. I mean, it would, you know, it's 200 and some thousand dollars for us to do it, and, you know, I mean, from a, from a planning discussion, I will tell you that, that communities, when they do go down this path and they start looking at these Opticom systems, they do say, hey, if a development comes about where a traffic intersection's needed in a transportation study because of the development, then it's borne on the developer to put it in, in the traffic signal. And that's, that's a conversation that certainly, you know, should be had, where it wouldn't be borne, you know, back to the county. But VDOT, you know, we've had conversations with VDOT, and what we would have to do is we would have to get a permit with VDOT. VDOTs would not, they will allow us to do it, they won't do it for us.
Interesting. Yeah, it's true.
Is it an installation permit or an operating permit?
I think it's a little both. Certainly insulation.
It would be annual, I could conceive it would be annual for each intersection?
No, no, it wouldn't be an annual permit. It would not be, it would be, in that, in that sense, it would be an insulation permit. But there's, you know, there's only certain technology they allow to go in their intersections and their equipment, and, and this would conform to that, that, what they would allow.
Just out of curiosity, does the system have some kind of a detector in it to tell the driver of the emergency vehicle that it's actually working? Or are you going to have a fire truck blow through an intersection where the light didn't turn green for him?
No, in that case, you know, that's what we do essentially now. I mean, our, our policy is now is that we approach red light intersections all the time. We come to a complete stop. And we come to a complete stop and we, and, and, you know, you, in due regard, and you, you know, you do your best using your, your driver and your officer to clear an intersection. What this does is that you would know if it doesn't work, if it doesn't change. That's, that's the only really way. It uses an infrared signal that hits a receiver and within, I think it's, you know, I forget the distances on it, but, you know, within a, quite a line of sight, it would, you would see it's triggered, and eventually, before you get there, would turn green.
So don't, don't misunderstand me, I think it's a great idea. I'm a little surprised that you didn't already have them, so I'm 100% in support of it. But when you give people, human beings, something they start to think is automatic, sometimes they get a little careless.
Sure.
I was just curious. So it's dependent upon the driver to actually pay attention and stop if he needs to?
And I'll, I'll, I'll mention this, because that brings up a good point. And that is, even though, you know, because we go through green intersections too, when, but even though that intersection's green doesn't mean it's hazard-free. So just because it's green doesn't mean that, you know, I mean, you always have to act and do, and, and with vigilance and in due regard, because anything can happen, I mean, people run red lights all the time. So, and it happens, you know, we have people stop in front of us, we have people run red lights, but I don't think there's a piece to the So, and it happens, you know, we have people stop in front of us, we have people run red lights, but I don't think there's a piece to the technology that shows, not that I'm aware of.
So it'll speed up your responses because you won't have to wait on a light to turn green, or for the intersection to clear for you, but you're still going to stop, so it's not like you're just going to blow through them.
Correct, yeah, we don't, we don't blow through any, any intersections, not, not in our department. Because, like I said, stopping a fire truck of 60,000 pounds doesn't happen on a dime, so.
Thank you.
The, the next one is our fire rescue facilities, and this is, y'all have heard me come before you quite a bit. We talked about, Mr. Miller talked about company two. I do think that we are certainly within the last, the last six months, we have gained a lot of ground. Not at liberty to publicly announce the, the location, not at this point, I wish I could, but we, we have provided the owner a draft sales agreement. And that would be in a very strategic area of the Dahlgren District, to eventually move our current company to, off of the, off of Dahlgren Road where it's, it currently sits. You know, we also share some of the, you know, we also have some trucks at the old rescue squad too. So sometimes you have to get up and you have to go get the other truck that you need, that, you know, you couldn't fit in that building. The rescue squad was built in 1954, the fire station was complete in 1989. I think you, you, this, this body knows more than, better than anyone that, you know, in that particular area of the county, you can't change the footprints of your building because you're, you don't meet all the requirements. And so Dahlgren Road has gotten to be very cumbersome, to say the least, particularly in the morning and afternoon, to, to get emergency vehicles out of there. So we are very close, hoping to, you know, hoping to be able to make a public announcement in the near future. But after that, I think we are on a position to fast track, you know, in architectural and engineering, and hopefully construction. There is a, I know the colors on this map didn't turn out very well, but right now, we have three fire stations that cover the entire county. What we are proposing, this is our current primary response area. And company one, company one sits about right here. And it covers everything from Route 3 to the Stafford County line, to Route 3 on the Westmoreland County line. So it's a, out of the 183 square miles we have in the county, it covers, and a primary first due is 113 square miles. So what we are proposing is looking at something like this in the, in the, in the future. And this would be putting a fourth fire station in the county, particularly in the, the southeast shallow portion of the county. This would, this would break up the company one first due to, I think it's right at 58 square miles or 56 square miles, and then company four at 58 square miles. That end of the county is getting more populated, we're having more calls that are being generated towards that area. Our highest ISO ratings for home insurance are in that area of the county, because we're with, with, beyond the five-road mile distance for people to get, you know, a pretty affordable mortgage insurance for their homes. And just getting across 3 and 301 is, you know, is, is becoming, becoming more of a, of, of an issue as 301 becomes more, have a little more, more people transporting on that road. Any questions on, on those stations?
Have y'all identified a spot in the southeastern portion of the shallow area yet, or?
We, we have, we, and that is the, the area we have initially looked at, and the board has, has, you know, put some placeholders on that piece of land. That's right there, where the county owns the property, right beside the school bus.
Right, okay, this was what I was getting, got you.
Yeah, and there's, I know, some future plans and some other developments back there, but a fire station wouldn't take up a whole lot of that land, it's a big parcel. But that, that's, that's the area, that's the area that the county owns land, that's what I would, I think strategically, it would, it would certainly work out just fine there.
And so being that's on 301, just wondering, do you foresee, or have y'all been told of, are there any studies about anything that might increase the number of calls once the new bridge opens and additional traffic starts passing through the county?
I haven't, I haven't seen any, any, you know, I've heard a lot of talk.
Right, right.
I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any real studies.
That's all kind of weird too.
You know, I know VDOT has done some things, and in fact, we had a meeting with the, the bridge contractor yesterday to get an update on, on things. But I haven't, haven't seen anything, any real metrics of how much is going to increase.
Okay. That bridge is coming along. It's, it connects both sides now, it's pretty wild.
The next, next project, I'm sorry, was there any more questions, any other questions on the fire stations? The next project is our first official request for a aerial ladder truck. We have not requested that, not requesting that this year, but in the 2024, 2025, which would mean that if you, that was funded that year, it would probably be a year out before it came to King George at, at minimum. I, I, I think that, you know, in our department, at one time, we had a, we had an aerial ladder truck. And in 2000, roughly 10, we had a, it was, it was becoming a money pit, we had to, had to get rid of it. It, our last straw was, we had to send it up and actually had to get on a flatbed truck to Wisconsin, Appleton, Wisconsin, to, to get the ladder repaired on it. And, and after that, we ran into more problems, and it was time to see you later. But this is our first request from, from the county CIP capital program, we've, we have requested this. And what we're seeing is, we're seeing more buildings that are becoming higher. We're seeing more occupied buildings that are becoming higher, and we're seeing more, more, particularly homes that, you know, we can't reach the third floor, the, the second living floor with our ladder. Our ground ladders that we carry in King George are a 24-foot extension ladder. That, that will get you to a two-story window, and that's at ground level. That's not adding in, your first floor is your garage, your second floor is your primary living, primary living floor, and your third floor is your second living floor. And that's what you're, you know, we're, we're starting to see plans come across with that type of, that type of construction style. One of the things that makes a difference is whether these floors are occupied or not. So we have hotels. If we can't, if we can't get our, utilize a ladder truck from our mutual aid sources, we don't have one. And they will provide one if it's available, but if it's not available, it's not coming. So we utilize the base, we utilize City of Fredericksburg, we utilize Colonial Beach, we utilize Charles County, and, and Spotsavenga if we had to, but all those are from far away, and Stafford. So we don't, that's, that's something that we need to, we need to start planting the seeds and, and put this in the program to, as we, as a county continues to see growth. And I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Don't forget, it's a public hearing.
Sorry?
You have to open it to public.
To open up the public hearing, so at this point, we will open up the public hearing on this. So if there's any members of the community that would like to speak, please feel free to do so now. And seeing we don't have any takers in the audience, Mr. Dines, do we have anyone out in the internet land? All right. Yes, at this point, then we can close the public hearing.
Just as a reminder, you are required to turn in your rankings by July 26th, using the ranking system on the, the staff report provided to you. We will take the, the average of those rankings and provide them to you at the August meeting, for you to provide your final recommendations to the board during that meeting.
Awesome. So July 26th?
Yes, sir.
All right.
If, if you haven't already sent it, could you send the spreadsheet electronically?
Do you want it separate from your, from your packet? Yes, thank you, okay.
I mean, send this out now, so I can rank it and turn it in.
I sure will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, thanks everybody still here, appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is old business, zoning and subdivision, subdivision ordinance update, Article 6, Ms. Hall.
We have provided to you Article 6, it should reflect all of the changes that you have requested. As a reminder, you will have a work session later this month on the 26th at 6:00 PM, in which we will start diving into the standards that will be associated with that. And Berkeley Group team will be here.
On the 26th.
Yes.
And 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
All right. All right, any discussion on that? All right. Onto new business? Do we have any new business? Okay, then that brings us to the director's report.
In my director's report, I did acknowledge that we are currently looking for a building inspector. We have a current vacancy to fill. We also, in the month of May, did eight new single-family dwellings and 116 total permits for a revenue of $72,993. And of course, the full report is in your packet, do you have any questions?
Do not think that I do, that brings us on to other businesses, are there any other business for the evening? If there's no other business, then we are at that part of the evening where I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor. Motion passed unanimously, thank you all, have a good evening, see you on the 26th. At 6:00.